Hi, everyone. Welcome to the City of San Jose's Planning Commission meeting. If you could go ahead and get seated, we're going to get started. A few items of note. There is a parking validation machine in the back for those of you who chose to drive a very polluting vehicle to the council meeting tonight. For those of you who took transit or walked, you get an A+. One thing to note is that the machine will go away at 8:00. But if the hearing goes longer than that, the gates will open automatically. So don't panic if it's after 8:00 and you didn't get your parking validated. Another reminder, just turn off your cell phones so that there are no distractions in the chambers. And with that, we're going to go ahead and do a salute to the flag. So if you could stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So let the record show that all commissioners are present except for Commissioner Allen and Commissioner Oliverio. And with that, we want to go ahead and roll the summary of hearing procedures. Should we go ahead and just read them? Or have you discovered how to get it up? Or should I go ahead and read it?
I'm playing it, but it's not coming through.
Oh, okay. Then I will go ahead and read the summary of hearing procedures. "If you want to address the commission, please fill out a speaker card located on the table near the audiovisual technician and deposit the completed card in the basket." Where is the basket? I don't see the basket. Ah, there it is.
I think I figure it out.
Okay, go. Run tape.
Welcome to meeting of the San Jose Planning Commission. The following is a summary of the Planning Commission's hearing procedures. If you want to address the commission, please fill out a speaker card located on the table near the audiovisual technician and deposit the completed card in the basket. There are also speaker cards in the back of the chambers and at the side entrance. The procedure for this hearing is as follows. After the staff report, applicants and appellant may make a five-minute presentation. The chair will call out names on the submitted speaker cards in the order received. As your name is called, please line up in front of the microphone at the front of the chamber. Each speaker will have two minutes. Speakers using a translator will have four minutes. After the public testimony, the applicant and appellant may make closing remarks for an additional five minutes. Planning commissioners may ask questions of the speakers. Response to commissioner questions will not reduce the speaker's time allowance. The public hearing will then be closed, and the Planning Commission will take action on the item. The Planning Commission may request staff to respond to the public testimony, ask staff questions, and discuss the item. If you challenge these land use decisions in court, you may be limited to raising only those issues you or someone else raised at this public hearing or in written correspondence delivered to the city at or prior to the public hearing. The Planning Commission's action on rezonings, prezonings, general plan amendments, and code amendments is only advisory to the city council. The city council will hold public hearings on these items. Section 20.120.400 of the municipal code provides the procedures for legal protests to the city council on rezonings and prezonings. The Planning Commission's action on conditional use permits is appealable to the city council in accordance with Section 20.100.220 of the municipal code. Agendas and a binder of all staff reports have been placed on the table near the door for your convenience. Thank you.
So now, we're going to move to the section of our agenda that is intended to invite the public up to comment on items that are not on our agenda. I have no speaker cards in front of me, so unless someone really wants to speak on an item that is not on the agenda, we'll go ahead and move on. And seeing no movement, we will go to Item 3A, deferrals and removals from the calendar. Staff?
Thank you, Chair. Sylvia Doe with Planning and Building and Code Enforcement. There are no updates to the deferral calendar. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there a motion to -- on the deferrals? All right, there's a motion to approve staff's recommendation. Is there a second? Commissioner Allen will second the motion. And also, it will be noted that he is here. Yep. So is there any questions or anyone want to speak to the motion? All right, then let's go ahead and vote by light. All right. So motion passes unanimously with Commissioner Oliverio absent. Moving on to the consent calendar, Item 4A. And I've been given a heads-up that staff would like to pull this item. So staff?
Staff just has an update for the item, but would still continue to recommend it on the consent calendar. So the one and only update for the only item on the consent calendar, file number CP17028, is that in coordination with the applicants and city arborist, staff recommends the addition of permit condition number six, which is included in your updated resolution that was passed out to all the planning commissioners prior to the hearing. But I'll go ahead and read it verbatim for the record. So permit condition number six reads, "Permit adjustment required. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, the permitee shall obtain a permit adjustment to the satisfaction of the Director of Planning for a revised landscape plan which addresses the following: A) Provide native replacement trees, such as oak trees, along Capital Expressway Project Frontage; and B) Provide replacement trees along the Quimby Road Project Frontage that are compatible with the existing street trees along Quimby Road, which include silver linden and red horse chestnut." Thank you.
Great. So that is staff's update on the consent calendar. Is there a motion on the consent calendar? So a motion by Commissioner Griswold to approve the consent calendar. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Commissioner Caballero. Are there any comments, questions on the motion? All right, then let's go ahead and vote. And again, we have a unanimous vote with Commissioner Oliverio absent. So we're now going to move on to Section 5, which is the public hearing. And we have one item on this -- under this section. And I am being advised by the city attorney that I need to recuse myself from this vote. So I will be handing over the gavel to Commissioner Griswold. And before I do that, I just wanted to state for my record -- for the record, my friendly disagreement with the city attorney's office on the suggestion that I recuse myself and explain the reason for it. I spent 14 years in the affordable housing advocacy realm, and in that time helped to found one of the great nonprofits that now exists, SVET Home. I am on their board, and they have written a letter in support of this project. And according to the interpretation of council's policy, if there's an appearance of bias, then it is recommended that a commissioner step aside or recuse themselves. Like I said, I disagree with this broad interpretation, but I also do not want to potentially put any decisions that the commission makes in jeopardy. So I will go ahead and recuse myself and suggest that maybe the council members that are listening to this revisit the council policy that describes what an appearance of bias might look like as someone who has long time been in the affordable housing advocacy world. And I am absolutely biased, and we all are. I bring a lived experience to this table that I want to share with everyone here and use to inform my decisions, as we all do. We all have biases, and it doesn't necessarily mean that I can't fairly evaluate projects that come before me. So with that, I will go ahead and recuse myself, and I'll go and sit in the audience with my mother, who is here and has been lobbying me on this project. So welcome, everybody. I'm going to be standing in for our Chair Ballard. I am Vice Chair Griswold. But if we could have a staff report on this agenda item?
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Ruth Gueto with the Planning Division. The project before you, for consideration, is a conditional use permit to allow the demolition of an existing vacant commercial building and the construction of a four-story mixed-use project consisting of approximately 16,000 square feet of commercial uses, including social service agency uses, and 147 apartments, 145 of which will be affordable, age-restricted, 62 years and older. Forty-nine of those will be reserved for special needs seniors as defined by California Government Code, Section 51312, which may include seniors at risk of homelessness. The applicant also submitted a state density bonus request for the following concessions: reduction of residential recreation space requirements, reduction in motorcycle parking spaces, and the use of the city's incentive parking ratio. The applicant submitted a tentative map -- tentative subdivision map application to subdivide the single parcel into two condominium units consisting of one commercial condominium and one residential condominium. The project site is located on the north side of Blossom Hill Avenue, approximately 720 feet easterly of Snell Avenue. The site has an existing vacant commercial building and surface parking. There is a three-story medical office building to the east, a bank and restaurants to the west of the site along Blossom Hill. And to the south, along Blossom Hill Road, are single-family homes and a shopping center, Downer Square, with a grocery store, pharmacy, restaurants, and other commercial uses. To the north and northwest of the site are two multifamily condominium developments. The commercial and social service agency uses would be located on the ground floor along Blossom Hill Road. The design includes an outdoor privately-owned publicly-accessible plaza, as well as a fenced courtyard. One portion of the courtyard on the east side would be reserved for residential uses, the others for the commercial uses. The applicant has secured lease commitments from a local nonprofit, Catholic Charities of Santa Clara County, to lease 6,000 square feet for two senior health programs, an adult day program and adult behavioral health program. The applicant has not secured a tenant for the remaining 10,000 square feet. However, the intent is to find a tenant that focuses on senior health. If they are not successful, other commercial uses can be allowed per the CN Commercial Neighborhood Zoning District standards. During the public outreach process, community members expressed concerns that the ground floor uses would include drop-in mental health services and a needle exchange program. The applicant does not intend to lease the ground floor space for a needle exchange program. With regards to drop-in services, the applicant has stated that the programs run by Catholic charities require an appointment, thus no drop-in services will be available. Staff has included a condition in the permit -- conditional use permit that requires standard business hours for client visits for social service agency uses to be between 8:00 a.m. and 6:00 p.m., Monday through Friday, with no drop-in services. The residential uses on the first floor include the entry lobby, service coordinator's office, security desk, an office for the police department to use on a drop-in basis, a bike room, and community room. The project will include security measures such as cameras throughout the site, a 24/7 desk clerk that will monitor the entry of the building, as well as property management staff, two of which will live on-site. A full-time service coordinator will be available on-site, whose role is to assess the needs of the residents and act as a navigator for residents to connect them with services that exist throughout the county. The services offered include, but are not limited to, transportation sourcing, social events, holiday celebrations, educational programs, and linkage to other community services. The second through fourth floors of the building are exclusively for residential uses. The project will provide a mix of studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, and two three bedrooms that would be reserved for management. There's a landscape courtyard on the second floor, a fitness room on the third floor, and laundry rooms on the second and fourth floors. The property has a general plan designation of NCC Neighborhood Community Commercial and is within the Blossom Hill/Snell Urban Village area, which does not have an adopted general plan -- urban village plan. General Plan Policy IP-5.12 sets a path for projects that are 100% affordable, deed-restricted housing to move forward in these circumstances. The criteria are that the project cannot result in more than 25% of the total residential capacity of the urban village it is located in. The development must be consistent with the approved urban village plan if one exists. Should substantially -- the project should substantially replace existing commercial square footage, and it should not be located on identified key employment opportunity sites. Staff finds that the project conforms to this policy based on the following, which can be found on page four of the staff report. The project would not result in more than 25% of the residential capacity currently allocated to the Blossom Hill/Snell Urban Village. There is no urban village plan adopted for this urban village area. The project is replacing the existing commercial with 16,000 square feet of commercial uses and based on a 2016 report by Strategic Economics, the site is not located on an identified key employment opportunity site. As noted in the staff report, the project received many comments from neighbors in the public. Most of the concerns raised were regarding the proposed residents of the project, namely persons who have experienced chronic homelessness. Community members expressed that this population would not mix well with the other low-income seniors, that they would result in an increase in crime and safety issues. As noted in the staff report, staff researched articles and studies focused on crime and affordable housing. These studies did not find a correlation or strong relationship between those two issues. Concerns regarding the reduced parking ratios were also raised. As noted in the staff report, the applicant is requesting a city density incentive for reduced parking. Section 20.190.060 in the municipal code states that if a project qualifies for a density bonus and requests a parking incentive, the granting of the incentive will be deemed to be required to provide the affordable restricted units. Staff can deny the incentive if it is deemed to have a specific adverse impact upon public health and safety, or the physical environment, or any property that is listed in the California Register of Historical Resources, or be contrary to state or federal law. There is no substantial evidence that this incentive would cause such a specific adverse impact on public health and safety or the other items discussed. Additionally, if the project requested parking ratios pursuant to state density bonus law, for example, the .5 space per unit for senior housing and the .3 space per unit for special needs residents, staff could only deny the request based on an area-wide parking study conducted in the last years. It is our understanding that this -- such a study has not been done for the area. I would like to point to a few project conditions that we would like to add to the CUP, and we passed around a handout for you to review. The two changes to the CUP resolution are as follows. In the discussion in Section Regarding Parking Requirements, the resolution states that the required parking for the residential portion of the project is four spaces. The correct number is eight spaces. The project is providing 44 spaces for the commercial uses. Staff would like to add the following permit conditions, to read as follows. Provide end-of-trip bicycle bike facilities, including onsite showers and lockers. Implement a transportation demand plan prior to public works clearance for building permit for the VMT impact for the following measures. One, ride-sharing program for 100% of employees. Two, special needs public transportation coordinator. Three, onsite TDM administration and services. Four, preferential parking with charging stations for electrical vehicles. Five, provide a TDM plan prior to the issuance of a building permit. Include an annual monitoring requirement establishing a trip cap of 66 p.m. PHT. The annual monitoring report must demonstrate the project is within 10% of the trip cap and must be prepared by a traffic engineer. Six, if the project is not in conformance with the trip cap, the project may add additional TDM measures to meet the trip cap. A follow-up report will be required within six months. If the project is still out of conformance, penalties will be assessed. See Council Policy 5-1. Additionally, on page three of -- I'm sorry, page 26 of the CUP resolution, there is a typo in Condition 43B3. It should read as follows. "A traffic impact analysis has been performed for this project based on 50 a.m. and 59 p.m. peak hour trips." The resolution right now states 15 a.m. and 21 p.m. peak hour trips, and that is a typo. As outlined in the staff report, the project conforms to several general plan policies related to social equity and diversity, affordable housing, and business growth and retention. It also conforms to the municipal code and the city's residential design guidelines. As a project would facilitate the production of lower-income housing in an identified growth area, the Blossom Hill/Snell Urban Village area, and provide commercial uses, staff recommends that the Planning Commission adopt a resolution approving the mitigated negative declaration and associated mitigation monitoring and reporting plan, adopt a resolution approving the tentative map and the conditional use permit, and adopt a resolution approving a density bonus regulatory agreement. This concludes staff's report.
Thank you.
Ruth, I had a couple of clarifying questions. I'm sorry. On the conditions that you're changing, number one, the parking requirements, which condition of approval is that? I was trying to look through these as you were speaking, and I -- And I have the same question for number two.
So this is a finding.
Okay.
Yeah, a finding, number five, zoning conformance, land use, page -- page seven under parking, says total required is four, where it should be eight.
Thank you. And for number two, where is that?
That would be a new condition.
And what number would it be? Do we need to renumber everything after it, or?
I would -- yeah, it should be 44, right, the last one? Yeah, we would renumber it to 44 and renumber 44 to 45.
Okay. And with the last one, I'm sorry, I was attempting to write while you were talking and trying to find this at the same time. I got the 50 a.m. trips. What were the p.m. trips?
59.
Thank you. That's all.
All right. So we're going to move to the public comment and applicant period. So the way that this is going to work, we have a number of public comments here. So we're going to have -- we're going to hear from the project applicant first. They'll have five minutes to present their project. Then we're going to move to the public comment period. Each member of the public will have two minutes to make their comments. Because there are so many comments, and we want to give everybody an opportunity to be heard, at the end of your two minutes, I will give you a gentle reminder to conclude your comments. After public comment period has closed, we'll move back to staff to comment on anything that may have come up. And then we'll give the project applicant an additional opportunity to make a final presentation of five minutes. So with that, I'm going to invite the project applicant.
Thank you very much. Good evening. My name's Kathy Robinson. I'm with Charities Housing, and I'd really like to thank the commission for hearing this development concept this evening. We've been working on it quite a long time. I'd like to start by thanking the staff for all the time they've put into this as well. It's been a long and arduous process at times, and so we are grateful to be here tonight. Just a little background on who Charities Housing is. We are a nonprofit housing development corporation. We focus most of our efforts in Santa Clara County. We just celebrated our 25th anniversary of providing affordable housing in Santa Clara County. We started as an outgrowth of Catholic charities and still have a close relationship. They provide services at all of our developments. To date, we have about 33 different properties in operation throughout Santa Clara County, 1,300 rental units, and various developments under construction, as well as in the entitlement phase. This is just a quick map that sort of orients you to where our developments are located, as far north as Mountain View, far south as South San Jose and Blossom Hill site is designated there. Most -- many, if many of our developments are in San Jose, the city of San Jose. I'm just going to show you a couple of examples. This first one is Pension Esperanza. It's very close to City Hall. It's over at the corner of Byrd and Ozeray. Built in 1999, 110 studio apartments with primarily extremely low and very low-income individuals live there. And it's one of the hallmarks of our portfolio. The second one is San Antonio Place in Mountain View, 120 studio apartments. Again, very affordable. A lot of the folks that live here came in as special needs residents, homeless, people with various disabilities, continue to live there. We intentionally incorporate folks with special needs into all of our affordable housing developments because we feel that it really makes for a very healthy community for everyone who lives there. And this last -- And this last development is the Veranda. It's, it's here, I'm showing it to you this evening because this actually just opened this year, but it's very analogous to what Blossom Hill Road will be. It's a 62 and over affordable development, and a third of the folks who live here who moved in are permanent supportive housing, permanent supportive housing individuals. This is the first Measure A bond-funded development and occupied. So, moving into what we're discussing this evening, this is a rendering of the Blossom Hill Senior Development. This is a site plan. It just intended to show you generally how the site is laid out. Ruth described it very well, but we have parking around the perimeter so that we have reasonable setbacks from all of our neighbors. We have quite a bit of open space for both our own community and for the community at large, and we share access with the, with the medical building next door currently, and will continue to do so once the development is built. It's a four-story building. The top three floors are residential. The ground floors are where the amenities and the commercial space are. We have a mix of apartments for our seniors who are going to live here, although the majority of them are smaller because we found that that's a really good functional size for folks. We have some larger units, ones and two bedrooms, so that people who need attendant care as they age in place will be able to do that. All of the units are designed for folks to live here as long as they possibly can and have an, have a gratifying experience. This is our residential and community space layout. The tan areas are the resident serving, serving spaces, community spaces that are for the folks who are going to live there. We have a controlled access system so that everybody who comes in and out of the building will pass by. Desk clerks who will be there 24/7 to check people in and check people out, make sure that the, who, we know who's coming in and the building remains safe. And then there are offices and community spaces for both our residents and for the greater community of folks from the outside want to, want to come in and use the space for meetings or other activities. As Ruth mentioned, that we have 16,000 square feet of commercial space that we need to occupy. Catholic charities will run a couple of programs there, and we're continuing to look for another senior-focused service provider. This is, this is kind of an illustration of how we think the community space and the common area will lay out on the outdoor space. There's...
Thank you. Your time is up.
Oh, dear.
But you'll have another opportunity.
Okay.
Yes. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Sorry.
I'm going to move to the public comment. I'm going to call names three at a time, and I apologize if I either can't read the name or mispronounce it. The first speaker will be Gabriella Gabnian. The second speaker will be Susan Price, and the third speaker will be Gail Osmer. And after those three, it'll be Sheri Burns, Mary Blakesley, and Kevin Zwick.
So, I'm Gabriella Gabrianne. I don't have my letter written here, and I can't find my glasses, so it doesn't really matter. I'm just speaking on behalf of a vulnerable community of elders, simply because of my experience of being homeless and witnessing it in my community. I'm not homeless now, thank God, but I just want to share with you since I don't have a written paper to tell you of the urgency of this specific population, for instance, I just want to tell you what I experienced. Going down to my grocery store half a block from me, I witnessed elderly men, they cannot walk, being discharged from the hospital with wheelchairs and luggage. And after days of seeing them there, I would make a special meal and bring it to them, and I would try to approach them to give it to them, and they wouldn't even look into my eyes, as far as like acknowledging that I'm there because not only are people, when you're older and you're sick and you're homeless, or when you're healthy and you're homeless and you are exposed to the environment where you don't have shelter for a period of 24 hours or more, you're not able to respond and, and acknowledge people when they talk to you. And, you know, this happens on a daily basis that I witnessed this, and I just want to say that how we treat our elderly really represents how we feel about the treasures that we have, and your decision is a very important one because it shows what our community values, and if you don't say yes, that means that you don't care. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing. And out of respect for all of the viewpoints that are going to be shared, some that are going to be ones that you agree with and some that you may not agree with, if you could hold back on clapping or boos or cheers, it would be appreciated.
Hello. My name is Susan Price-Jang, and I am here representing PACT, People Acting in Community Together, and we support this program. I personally support it because, like Gabriella, I, I see a number, my neighborhood is bracketed by actually three 7-Elevens, and two of them, I can, every time I go there, there's always elderly people hanging around, and there's one in particular, Jo, who's in a wheelchair, and she's now going down to the Bascom Library because there's an OWL program there. But I worry about Jo because Jo should not be out on the street. But, and there's others. And, and when you're elderly, you're so vulnerable, and I just can't understand why anyone would say no to this. I live in a neighborhood myself in which another project for, for people who have been chronically homeless is going up in my neighborhood, and I'm perfectly fine with that because we have a lot of homeless people around here, and I'd, I'd like to see them cared for and supervised in getting what they need. And I think this project sounds perfect because I'm familiar with Catholic charities, I'm, I used to work for them, in fact, and I also am familiar with Charities Housing, and this is a class act. This is really good, and this is just what people need. And I, I think, I'm, I was happy to see the program run by another organization going into my neighborhood, but it isn't enough. I also know where Gabriella lives, that there are seven people living in little places. They're all on housing vouchers. They're, almost all of them are elderly. They're going to be displaced because they're all going to be torn down, and high-rise condos are going to be built. That's on San Carlos Street. I just see people being pushed out, and their social security isn't enough to pay the rents. They need another place to go, and I would really hope that we'd help the most vulnerable among us. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Gail Osmer, and I'm a member of PACT. I'm a member of Santa Teresa Church, and also I am the chair of Santa Clara County Senior Care Commission, and today we had our commission meeting and revoted unanimously to support this much-needed project. And I was asked to come and speak, and of course I would because I'm an activist for senior housing and homeless housing. More than once, I've seen many, many homeless seniors out on the street. They need housing. Even seniors that have housing and are vulnerable to be getting kicked out, they need this senior housing tremendously, and I, I know you all believe that. Another thing that we've been working on as our senior commission is aging in place for seniors. It's so important, and that's my biggest advocacy as the chairperson, to make sure and help as many seniors as we can in the county and the city to stay at their homes, age in place. I just can't even imagine anybody not supporting this project. Kathy and her group from Charities Housing are wonderful. She's come and spoke at our commission meeting many times, and we support her and Charities Housing 100%, so please support this. It's very important because, you know, you all have parents and, you know, they might want to move in there someday. Probably not, but they might. Anyway, thank you so much, and thanks.
I'm short. Shorter than Gail, anyway. Good evening, commissioners. My name's Sheri Burns. I'm the executive director of Silicon Valley Independent Living Center and advocacy and resource agency for people with disabilities of all ages throughout Santa Clara County. I'm also the co-chair of the Aging Services Collaborative for Santa Clara County and the co-chair of the Long-Term Services and Supports Committee. While I'm here representing the county's hundreds of thousands of older adults and persons with disabilities who are in desperate need of safe, affordable, and accessible housing, I'm also here representing myself. I was born and raised in San Jose and have lived here my entire life. Currently, I live in District 6. I've seen lots of changes and growth during that 50-plus years of time here, some of them not so good, but most of them exciting and positive. However, I cannot think of one change that is more negative and problematic in our community than the designation we have today from Zillow as being the top of the list for the least affordable metro area in the country to buy or rent. The average homeowner needs to spend more than half of their income on a mortgage, and low-income residents have to spend nearly all of their income on an apartment if they can find one at all. Silicon Valley Independent Living Center's clientele is mainly very or extremely low-income people with disabilities, including older adults with chronic conditions, and the fastest-growing population of our county's homeless are older adults. These older adults have lost their homes or apartments, often due to rapidly escalating rents they cannot afford on a fixed income. We can do better. We must do better. Building the 147-unit senior housing complex on Blossom Hill Road will be a great start to achieving the number of safe, affordable, accessible units we desperately need in San Jose and our surrounding cities. It is a great project and a perfect location. I hope you will vote in support of it. Thank you.
Thank you. After the last list of people that I called, the next people will be Deborah Torrens, Carol Watts, and Bob Browwater, or something like that. Hopefully that I didn't butcher that name too badly.
A good evening. I am here to ask you to approve this wonderful project that the others have been supporting before me. I'm Mary Blakesley, and my husband and I moved here in 1969. We raised four children in the Almanin Valley. They attended San Jose Unified throughout their education. They participated in the community sports programs and the civic and educational activities that were offered. We paid our taxes. We supported our city councilperson. We supported our local leaders out there in the Almanin Valley, and my children all skated at the Aloha Roller Rink, which is the property we're talking about developing. Okay. Today is Wednesday, December 11th, and I am in a precarious position. In 2016, I moved into a very nice apartment complex and was able to qualify for a below-market rate unit, and at that time, my income fell between the high and the low of what it took to qualify. Now, we're three years later. My income has not increased. However, the apartment rent has increased every year because it's tied to the average median income. So, as the wages go up here in the valley, so do the rents, and I'm at the position now that I can't afford my rent. Planning commissioners, please look at me. I could be any one of your mothers, and my question I would ask is... Well, I'm older than I look, okay. My question is, what action would you take if it was your mother standing here, talking to you from this position? I think, oh, I am representing all of the fixed income residents in San Jose and Santa Clara County. There are many of us, and I think that there, I have no way to increase my income, but I can't stop the raise in the rents. So, then what am I to do? Do I become one more of the homeless? So, I'm really...
Thank you very much. Appreciate you sharing.
Hi. My name is Kevin Zwick, and I'm the CEO of Housing Trust Silicon Valley, and I live and I work in San Jose, and I strongly support this development as designed and urge the planning commission to move it forward tonight without delay for a lot of reasons, but I'm going to focus on three. Number one, no surprise, we're in a tremendous housing crisis, which is especially acute for seniors, and if we don't act now, we're going to lose more of our seniors from our community. According to HUD, the number of Americans 62 or older with severe housing cost burdens is now over 2 million, and in Santa Clara County, 55% of seniors were considered severely rent burdened. A few lucky seniors get housing assistance. The rest are living at risk of becoming homeless, spending too much on rent, leaving not enough food for health, for food and healthcare. Number two, Charities Housing is one of the most trustworthy and most experienced, mission-driven, affordable housing providers in our region, and they have a proven track record of high-quality, well-designed, well-run apartment buildings in our city and county, and it shows in the level of respect and care they devote to making amazing places to live for those in our community with the fewest resources and options. And finally, number three, it's just that San Jose needs vastly more affordable housing, particularly for very low and extremely low-income renters, and we can't let old reasons and disproven reasons keep us from building this affordable housing, nor can we waste valuable time continually dragging on developments to meet some unattainable goal when a building like this, approving it now, is critical to meeting San Jose's goal of providing affordable housing for everyone, but especially our city's seniors most in need. Thank you.
Good evening, planning commission. I'm Deborah Torrens, and I grew up in this neighborhood that we're talking about, and I had my first crush at Aloha Roller Rink on the couple's skate, and it holds such fond memories, and I was very sad to see the skating rink go, but times change and interests change, and it was time for it to go. And I can't think of anything better to go into this spot than a place for seniors, so I'm strongly in favor of this project. In fact, the reason I was able to live back in my neighborhood when I came back in 2000 was because my parents retired, and they offered to sell, my husband and I, our house at a discount. So, we live in affordable housing privately funded by my family, but what that enabled us to do was to contribute in our neighborhood. So, instead of having to dish out 60, 70% of our income, we had, we did, we don't pay that much, and we, I served as the president of my neighborhood association for five and a half years. I've been able to raise four kids and be a teacher, and so I know that, that this is important to have things at different rates for people, especially our seniors. And just the other day, I was at the Santa Teresa Library, and I saw this gentleman who didn't even look like he was homeless. He was dressed really nicely, and he had a nice briefcase, and he laid it down on the sidewalk, and he was taking a nap with his coat over him, and I thought, this is a person who would benefit from this housing. And I thought, this is a person who would benefit from this housing. And here he is at the library. No one in their old age should have to live like that, especially in such a wealthy place as this. So I request one thing, and to make sure that we have some signage up that says Senior Citizen Facility when this project goes through, so that people on Blossom Hill are aware of it. And thank you so much for your time and your consideration.
Thank you.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Carol Watts, and I'm the president of the League of Women Voters of San Jose, Santa Clara. We strongly support adoption of all four resolutions approving the Blossom Hill Senior Apartment Project. Affordable housing is a desperate need in our county. As a nonpartisan organization, we're celebrating our 100th anniversary on February 14, 2020. We take action only after study and analysis and consensus of our membership. The League has long been an advocate for careful land use planning that promotes compact growth, natural resources protection, and social and economic equality. Thank you for continuing to evaluate the details of this project to make changes as is necessary to protect public safety and a good quality of life for all. We believe that this project represents smart growth respecting climate change issues. It conforms to San Jose's general plan and other regional planning efforts. We are committed to sustainable communities, supporting policies that increase the supply of safe, decent, and adequate housing. We support the inherent right of every person to equality of opportunity for adequate housing. Please take all the necessary steps to improve this project. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. After the next speaker, we'll hear from Robin Hare, Jackie Hefner, and then Patty Fishburne.
Good evening. My name is Bob Brownstein. I've lived in San Jose for over 40 years. I'm strongly in support of this project. For many years, I've worked on issues associated with the needs of the LTSS community, that is, people who require long-term services and supports. Most of them are disabled or elderly or both. The population of this city is becoming more gray or white, if you get beyond gray. And the number of seniors needing affordable housing, particularly affordable housing with LTSS services, is high, and it is growing. This project will improve the well-being and the security of its residents. Instead of overcrowded conditions or substandard housing or homelessness, residents will be in new, high-quality units managed by an experienced and dedicated organization. They will be much more secure in this project. The project will be staffed 24/7 to respond to urgent needs or emergencies. Services will be on-site, both convenient and contributing to the security of residents. And one of the greatest threats to the safety and health of older people is falling. Not being pushed down as in a crime, but falling because one's sense of balance declines as one gets older. And those of you who are not at 70 and think that this will never happen to you, check with your doctor. You will get a disappointing message. It is a very real phenomenon with very serious health consequences. This project is designed for seniors to protect them from those kinds of accidents and thereby contributing to their well-being and safety. San Jose needs this project, and it needs many more like it. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Robin Hare. I'm here to ask you to approve the Blossom Hill Senior Apartments because I live there. I live right in that neighborhood. These are my neighbors, and they're going to be my neighbors. I'm here to speak, actually, because two of my neighbors have been priced out of housing in the area. They were on a set income, and the rent just became out of their reach. It seems to me that all seniors should have a right and a need to stay someplace that is familiar to them, where they know their neighbors, they know where they're shopping, they know their friends. So I urge you, please, do say yes to these apartments. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Hefner, and I am a 24-year resident and homeowner in District Two. I also live about 1.5 miles from this proposed development. Our household is comprised of five people: my husband, myself, my daughter, our daughter's partner, and our son. All of us are 100 percent in support of the Charities Housing proposal on Blossom Hill Road. This proposal will be an upgrade to the area. If you haven't been in that area, I suggest you go drive down Blossom Hill to see what's going on there. It will also provide our community with needed meeting space in an open area. The location couldn't be more perfect. It is next door to a medical building. It is across the street from a grocery store, drugstores. It's next door to a bank. It's walking distance to other banks. It's a short walk to the light rail, restaurants, and more. This location is also close to the new VA, the DMV, Social Security Office, Kaiser, the Southside Senior Center, numerous dental offices, and the new shopping center on Cottle Road. In the 20-plus years that I've lived at this home, I've shopped at that location on a weekly basis. We go to Aki, the Pet Club, Walgreens, Michael's, the Dollar Store, Angelo's, Togo's, and many more. I have never once had a problem, ever. That's not to say that my viewpoint is the perspective for everyone, but I go there weekly, and I live there, so I would know. I hope, my family hopes, that you will approve this. It is... When we first came to San Jose, I worked for a company called Senior Information and Referral.
Thank you. Your time's up.
Okay.
Thank you. After the next speaker, we'll hear from Gary Fishburne, Lam Ballard, and Greg Miller.
Hello, everyone. I'm Patty Fishburne from San Jose Action. I have an email here from Nikita Jablonsky I'd like to read, since he's unable to attend. "I want to raise concerns regarding the zoning legality of the proposed project. Please direct your attention to IP 512 in the general plan. The zoning of the project area is commercial; however, the project is residential. The project proponents have been referring to IP 512 as a legal framework for building a residential project in a commercial zone. IP 512 does have very specific criteria for allowing a residential project in a commercial zone. However, if just one of these criteria is violated, the project doesn't have legal standing to proceed. It is my belief that multiple criteria of IP 512 are not met by this project. This rule is followed by a list of criteria that all have to be met in order for a particular project to proceed. I believe that multiple criteria are not being met by this project. I would like to point the committee's attention to criteria that are blatantly being violated. Development that demolishes and does not adaptively reuse existing commercial buildings should substantially replace the existing commercial square footage. The project is not located on identified key employment opportunity sites, which are sites generally two acres or more, located at major intersections and for which there is anticipated market demand for commercial uses within the next 10 to 15 years. I believe other conditions are in question as well. However, violating just one renders any proposal moot. It is my understanding that there are financial..."
Thank you. Your time's up as well. Thank you very much.
Hello. My name's Gary Fishburne. I'm a rare breed of person. I'm a resident from that area. A lot of these people that have come up here are activists, and I understand their feeling on this project. But I live there, and we've seen that area in 10 years go from a vibrant area to what it is now, which is kind of a blighted area and getting worse. Homeless have come into that area, a few at a time. Now there's many homeless there. Now we're going to have another 30 percent of this project also being homeless. We have... Or they're homeless, but I'm saying we're adding to the homeless problem there. We have businesses there that are leaving. Michael's has indicated to us that they're leaving because of the problems there. Also, I believe when we went to a meeting a few months ago, and Charities Housing was going to explain to the residents there what this project was, we feel we were a little bit deceptive, or she was a little bit deceptive in her telling us what was going on. At the end of the meeting, we were able to ask some questions by cards, not really asked questions, but only after that, after she had told us the project, she never mentioned it was going to be 30 percent homeless there. She never mentioned there was going to be a needle exchange program. Now, I feel if my mother was going to go into a place where a needle exchange program was, and you had homeless in there also, it's not a good mix.
Thank you.
And for those reasons, I'm against the project.
Thank you very much.
Hi. My name is Greg Miller. I'm a retired nurse and a member of California Alliance for Retired Americans. And I don't really understand the rationale of you don't want homeless to have houses and become not homeless and have services provided. This seems to be an excellent program with a track record of Charities Housing. It seems to be attractive development. It's well-designed. You know that seniors live on meager Social Security checks, often in meager pension checks. Some of them are on SSI, you know, making less-than-poverty-level pay. So what do you expect with a situation like that? That people are going to become homeless with that kind of income? And also, wages, any wages that exist, do not go up anywhere nearly as fast as rents. So we need to do something about that, and we need 50 projects like this. And I would say, and also, I'm thinking of the mobile home parks, too. You know, they're on the edge also, just like valuable land that the owners want to sell and kick the people out. So, you know, there's a lot of people on the edge in San Jose, and we need to support them and support this project. Thank you.
Thank you. And after the next speaker, we'll hear from Robert Stromberg, Marie Arnold, I believe, and then Consuelo Collard.
Hi. I'm Lonnie Ballard, and I'm a 20-year resident homeowner in District Two. Just a short walk from this project. And I want to go on record to say that I support wholeheartedly this project. I'm a 70-year-old senior. I'm so appreciative of the fact that I have a place to go home to every night. And I wish that for more people. I know we're having a housing crisis, and it's a privilege to be able to support this project. And I hope you all will, too. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, planning commissioners. My name is Bob Stromberg. I work with Destination Home, a nonprofit organization working to end and prevent homelessness throughout the county. Thank you to you, the commissioners and staff, for your work today and in the future as we continue to work to end and prevent homelessness. Very briefly, there are so many reasons to praise this development proposal, but just sort of three key points: perfect location, close to transport services and amenities, great for anyone, but particularly lowest-income, older adults in our community. Charities Housing has rightly been praised for their long track record and reliability in our community. And third, the provision of extremely low income or ELI and supportive housing, which are proven to both prevent and end homelessness. And we need a lot more, and this will help get us some of the way. There are other things to say, but I did want to take just a moment. I think there may be some people here who are in support but would not like to speak and might like to show that support. So if I could ask our supporters to stand, raise a sign, show a sticker. We have a pretty broad-based support, and I'd also like to explicitly thank all of the partners who've come together. We do have to work on this collectively and collaboratively in our community if we're going to end homelessness. Thank you all for your time.
Thank you.
Hi. I'm Marie Arnold, and I've lived in the same house since 1964, and it's just two blocks away from this project, and raised six kids who graduated from Oak Grove High School. And so I'm a neighbor. And this woman, Claire Benson, I don't speak well, so I read. And this is from Claire. And she was a planning commissioner in the '70s. She's 90 years old right now. And she said, "I'm not able to join..." And she lives in Edenville right now. She said, "I'm not able to join you in person today, but being very familiar with both the site and the proposed urge use, I urge you to approve this well-thought-out project. Not only does it provide affordable housing for a vulnerable population, but it is so well-situated that one would be hard-pressed to find a more suitable site near shopping, transportation, a large county park, and other supportive amenities too numerous to mention. Like many of you, I remember when the Aloha Skating Rink existed on this site, followed by a furniture store. But the world has changed, and so do land use needs. Thus, I urge you to approve the project so as to help San Jose provide living space for all of its citizens. Sincerely yours, Claire Benson." And as I say, she was here when Janet Gray Hayes was president, mayor. And I also wanted to say that I'm a neighbor, but two of the people who are here are not neighbors. They're from, you know, quite far away. So I wish you'd take that into consideration, that the neighbors are for it. Thanks, or most of us are. Thank you for listening.
Thank you. Sorry. Is there a question?
Ma'am? Ma'am?
Oh, excuse me? Oh, question.
I was staff when Claire Benson was on the commission.
Oh, yeah. What's your name?
Yesny. So tell her we appreciate her service and thank her for going to the effort of sending the letter.
Don't tell her that I told her, that I said her age. Okay.
I think we shall just age her for you.
Who liked the tape? What did he say?
I think we shall just age her for you. Bye.
Yeah.
And after Ms. Collard, we will have Katie Dederiem, Sandra Correno, and Vicky Mueller Alvera.
Hi. Good evening, everybody. My name is Consuelo Collard, and I work for Catholic Charities of Santa Clara County. I'm the Resident Supportive Services Manager for Catholic Charities. And I have already submitted written comments to the planning commission, and I received responses from Ms. Gueto and Mr. Allen, so thank you. I will not repeat what I said in writing to you, but I just want to... I will not repeat what I said in writing to you, but I just want to verbally again ask you for your support and approval of this project. It's very much needed in the community. The homeless population has skyrocketed. We are in the worst housing crisis that I have seen. I have lived in Santa Clara County for over 45 years. Most of my adult life, I have spent working with housing programs and providing supportive services to low-income individuals and families in the county. And the crisis has, I have never seen a crisis as severe as we are experiencing right now in this area. I just want to again ask you for your support and approval of this project. Myself and my staff will be the people on site providing supportive services for the residents to make sure that all their needs are met and that they can age in place with dignity and with the support that they deserve. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. I am Sandy Coranio. I was born and raised in San Jose. I've seen it move from prune orchards to sweeping towers in downtown. We do have a homeless problem. I am for this project, but I am not for the project as written. I feel that there is a need for homeless shelter, and yet, where's the food for the homeless? I feel this project is not complete. There needs to be some type of food outreach to the residents there, and I don't see that. It is difficult to cross that intersection of Snell and Blossom Hill. Elderly people who walk with a cane or a wheelchair aren't going to cross. They're not going to have access to good nutrition. There needs to be either a fresh grocery outlet inside, or a salad bar, or a fruit and salad. I don't feel it's complete. And when I read this, I'm thinking, you're taking care of housing. You need to take care of the food. I don't know if it's a set plan, but I feel it's not done. You need to feed them. And if you're not going to feed them, they're going to be wandering, looking for food, begging, and losing their dignity. House them and feed them. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Katie Dederian. I'm a resident of the neighborhood where the Blossom Hill Mixed Use Project will be built, and I work for Catholic Charities of Santa Clara County as their grants director. In that role, I've come to know well the quality of the services that will be provided on-site. And I can also tell you that of the dozens and dozens of calls our agency receives daily from members of our community who are in need, the number-one request is for assistance with housing and rental assistance. In Charities Housing, the city and the neighborhood will have a proven professional partner to establish and manage the development, as they have done successfully many times over across the county for over two decades. Residents will be supported by Catholic Charity's Supportive Housing Services Team, who provide experienced and appropriate case management and service navigation for residents. And there's opportunity for expanded services for seniors in need and the community there as well. You know, in talking with some of my neighbors who are also speaking here tonight, we consider what we love about our neighborhoods. I noted the view of the foothills from Blossom Hill Road, and the great bike lanes when I'm out on my bike protecting me, and the wonderful diversity that I see when I'm out for a walk, or I'm stopping by the CVS right across the intersection from this site, or going to the doctor at the building right next door to this site. It's a diversity not only in our ethnicities, but in our ages, and it feels like we're a complete community because of that. I was born and raised elsewhere in the Bay Area, but I have made San Jose my home. And, but given the cost of housing here, will I be able to be part of this community for the rest of my career, or when I retire? And will San Jose remain a community that values and supports our seniors? That remains to be seen, but your decision here tonight may give us all some indication. And I, again, I urge you to support the staff recommendations to approve the Blossom Hill Mixed Use Project, and I thank you for your thoughtful consideration.
Thank you. After the next speaker, we'll hear from Jeffrey Buchanan, Bill Wallace, and Sean McFeely.
Good evening, commissioners. Please vote yes. I urge the city of San Jose to move forward with the approval of and support for the Blossom Hill Senior Apartments. My name is Vicky Mueller-Alvera. I currently live in San Jose. My husband's tech job brought us to this area. I'm not from the Bay Area. We, we live in the richest country in the history of this world. Within this rich country, we live in a unique area. It's home to Apple, based in Cupertino, Alphabet Google of Mountain View, Facebook, based in Menlo Park, Wells Fargo of San Francisco, Visa of San Francisco, Chevron San Ramon, Oracle, based in Rosewood City, Intel of Santa Clara, Cisco Systems, right here in San Jose, and Navida there in Santa Clara. We're also home to the have-nots. Santa Clara County has the sixth-highest number of homeless people in the nation. Silicon Valley is creating the richest and the poorest, and this is a disgrace. We, we can do better, and we need to do much better. You have the unique opportunity to be a part of this solution and to be a real part of the positive change that is necessary. I'm asking please that you do the right thing, and I'm respectfully requesting that you move forward with the approval of and support for the Blossom Hill Senior Apartments as proposed by Charity Housing. And thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Vice Chair Griswold, members of the commission. My name is Jeffrey Buchanan with Working Partnerships USA. On behalf of our organization, we'd like to encourage you to support the project as proposed. You've heard many speakers talk to, you know, how this project really uniquely tackles two of our biggest challenges, addressing our housing affordability and homeless crisis, and the growing needs of our older adult population. In fact, in Santa Clara County, by 2040, we'll have nearly 1 million older adults, creating a host of needs when it comes to caring and being able to age and live independently and to age in place. We think that this project, and certainly the leadership of Charities Housing, presents an important model. I think when you look to our, our most recent homeless census, we actually saw a pretty significant jump in the proportion of that population that is 61 years or older. So certainly, we have overall a large set of needs around housing and care opportunities for older adults, but certainly for our homeless population. This project tackles both, and also provides significant community amenities in terms of the services that will be located on-site, available to residents and members of the community. Really, we think providing a tremendous value and benefit in the types of services and housing opportunities that we need more of going forward. So I hope that we have your support. Thank you to you, and certainly to the Charities Housing team for the deep engagement with the community and all the work that they've put into this very thoughtful project. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Sean McFeely, and I'm here with Catalyze Silicon Valley. I grew up in this neighborhood, just down the street off of Monterey, and my parents still live in my childhood home. And growing, and this past year, losing my grandmother, I've seen, you know, everything that goes on with elderly people as they get older and the housing needs that they deal with. And I feel that senior housing and just more housing in general is needed. We, as part of Catalyze, advocate for more housing, denser housing, because we are in an incredible housing crisis right now. This project, Charities Housing, has been meeting with us on this project and talking with us, and over many times, we've seen their project adapt and change to community comments for the betterment. And so we want and urge the committee to support this project and push it forward. Thank you.
Thank you. After Mr. Wallace, we'll hear from Nicolette Lee, Roma Dawson, and Abu Bakar Nadiya.
Good evening. My name is Bill Wallace. I'm a member of the California Alliance for Retired Americans, and it's an advocacy for seniors. And one of the biggest needs, as we see it across the state of California, is affordable housing. Seniors are being priced out through no fault of their own, and we need to take care of our senior population. There's no, no question about it. We recommend and support this project, and I hope it moves through, but we certainly need a lot more. But we need to really put our ethics in front of us and move forward. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name is Nicolette Lee. I'm here to support the approval of the Blossom Hill Senior Apartments. I'm also a licensed clinical social worker at Catholic Charities, and I work with the mentally ill older adult program. And I want to just say that the, the way to stabilize someone with mental illness is through housing. And without housing, it is difficult for them to take their medications, to do, to make food, to take showers. And so really, the only way to combat homelessness is through more housing. And so, and I also grew up in this area as well, roller skating at Aloha Roller Rink, and the area has definitely suffered. And so I really think that this beautiful building will definitely add to the community. It's an area that doesn't get a lot of services, and so to be able to bring some additional services to the community, I think is really great. It also helps build community in an area that, that needs some community building. And so we really just need this housing for seniors and housing in general. The more housing we can build, the better our community's going to be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Roma Dawson. I'm one of those seniors Mr. Brownstein just referred to that's fallen. At any rate, in all seriousness, I'm here to urge you to strongly support this project. Having said that, I do not in any way want to negate, demean the concerns of the neighbors. I used to work for the council member in the 1990s for this area. I remember the painful closing of Aloha. I know this neighborhood roundtable very well. These are real, genuine concerns. I speak from my heart, obviously, because this is a wonderful project, but I'm also talking from my head, with firsthand knowledge of what a well-built, well-designed, well-managed, affordable project can do to enhance and help a neighborhood. This is part of the solution, not contributing to the problem. I hope every single neighbor that is concerned will get to know the project onsite manager on a first-name basis, spend time in the drop-in area, set up for police. I've worked on a number of good neighborhood plans, including with the Salvation Army Downtown. My compliments to the Charities Housing and to planning staff. Just about everything I can think of that's in a good neighbor policy is in this program. So it is difficult. I feel great sympathy for the neighbors, but I have family that lives in the area. I truly believe the next time I'm out there to visit, once this project is built and in the ground, I'm going to drive by and see a renaissance in that little shopping center. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, members of the commission. My name is Abu Bakar Nadiya. I am with Working Partnerships USA. First, I just want to say, I actually live cat-a-corner to two affordable senior apartments. And I have to say, it's made my neighborhood safer. It's made drivers slow down. It's allowed for multi-generational interactions, schoolchildren and folks like us, being able to interact with folks who are older and have lived in San Jose, and are able to give us a, a great background about the history of this city. So I think we all want to be able to live our golden years in dignity and comfort, and where we have time to see family or to volunteer in our community. Tonight, you have the opportunity to move forward on a project that will allow seniors to live near transit with onsite services and close to a grocery store and a pharmacy. If we're serious about addressing our housing and houselessness crisis, which is now disproportionately impacting seniors, we need projects that are exactly like this. So please allow this project to move forward so that these homes can be built for these seniors to have a chance to be full members of the Blossom Hill community and the San Jose community. Thank you so much.
Our next speakers are going to be Gregory Kepfeely, or Kepferl, Mitch Mankin, and then David Krenner, or Krenick.
Charities, are about a dozen cards or 20 left, or?
There are five more cards, including the three that I just called.
And I'll try to keep this to a minute. I urge you to support the Blossom Hill project. My name is Greg Kepferl. I'm CEO of Catholic Charities of Santa Clara County, and in that role, I am president of the board of Charities Housing Development Corporation. Our proposed development has gone through extensive regulatory review by staff and meets all city planning criteria. It helps the city get closer to meeting its own housing development goals by another 147 units, and it demonstrates equity and inclusion for seniors as valuable members of our community. It protects vulnerable seniors while alleviating and preventing homelessness, whereas a no-vote means allowing blight and neglect to affect the neighborhood. A no-vote means 49 seniors will remain homeless, and 96 seniors will continue to pay ever-rising rents, condemning them to live out their lives in poverty. Please, help us build a just and compassionate community. Vote yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is David Krenick. I've been a resident of San Jose for over 40 years, District 10. I second the comments that Bob Brownstein made earlier. I would just like to add, I have confidence that Catholic Charities of Santa Clara County will be able to provide the supportive services necessary for their senior tenants there to be good neighbors regardless of the circumstances or special needs they may have. I urge you to approve the, this urgently needed senior project. Thank you.
And after the next speaker, we'll hear from Betsy Hammercar, Brenda Gissi, and Matt Savage. And I apologize, I missed three cards, so we actually have five more to go.
Hi, my name is Mitch Mankin. I'm a San Jose resident and also a member of Silicon Valley at Home, the voice of affordable housing in Silicon Valley. We have a project endorsement process where we go thoroughly through the details of each of these kinds of projects and decide whether or not to endorse them. And after a very careful review, we've decided to endorse Charities Housing Affordable Senior Development. It meets all the zoning requirements. Charities Housing is an extremely experienced provider of very low-income housing and extremely low-income housing in this county, and we think they'll do an excellent job of housing these seniors. We're currently in the middle of our worst-ever homelessness crisis, and we just certainly don't have enough affordable places for people to live. Forty-ninety's homeless will end homelessness for the seniors who are on the street right now, and the other 98 can save low-income seniors from ending up there if they lose their current housing. These are our friends and neighbors, they're our parents, our grandparents, they're the people that hold our community together. They've built lives here, and San Jose is what it is because of them. It's time for us to return the favor. Please approve these homes tonight. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Betsy Hammercar. I've lived in District 6 basically my whole life, and am here supporting this project for many reasons. It solves, it takes a bite out of our homeless crisis, and afford- It solves, it takes a bite out of our homeless crisis, and affordability is so important to aging seniors. But another thing that's really important to aging seniors that I have watched my family suffer from is stimulation, supportive services, new friends, new relationships, and all those things are built right into this project. So, I urge you all to vote yes, and thank you for your service.
Thank you. So, if we could hear from Brenda Gissi, Matt Savage, Alex Schor.
My name is Alex Schor. I'm the Executive Director of Catalyze SV. You received some emails from some of our members about this project. Thank you for your consideration of them. We want to praise Charities Housing for being willing to come to this site and build a wonderful, affordable housing project. We've been supportive of many elements of this project. One of the ones we are very grateful for is the redesign of the plaza to make it more open to the community and more friendly. We're also grateful to the City of San Jose's Department of Transportation and Charities Housing for working to get a crosswalk on Blossom Hill to make it more pedestrian-friendly so folks can use that light rail station that's only half a mile away. One of the things we've asked Charities Housing, and we would talk to you all as planning commissioners about tonight, is we've asked Charities Housing to provide these residents with transit passes, to cut down on the need for driving in cars and parking, to further utilize the transit nearby, and make our environment better. So, we ask the Planning Commission and Charities Housing to consider that as part of this project as a condition of approval so that we can create the most sustainable place possible. I am wearing a sticker that is supportive of senior housing, and one of the best things that you, any organization you've heard from tonight, or a developer can do to build more housing that is affordable, is to build more affordable housing on the sites that they have. These are 50-year decisions, my friends, and those decisions matter. There will be nothing on this building built for 50 years after this wonderful project goes through. We've asked Charities Housing to build an additional story as part of this project. They said they could not because of community opposition. I have not heard that opposition here tonight, so I do not see a rationale for not building even more units as part of this project. That's how we solve affordable housing crisis, when we ask developers to build as many homes as they can for those who need them the most. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I don't see the next speakers. It sounds like someone's come down. So, if the people that I've called could all come down, we are actually at the end of our speaker cards. So, we've got Matt Savage, Brenda Gissi, and Claudine Cipili. Okay, so Matt, I'll cross him off the list. I've got, I think, two more.
I'm Brenda Gissi. Thank you for having me here tonight. I'm just going to read what I wrote so that I can get through this, so bear with me. "Thank you for the forum. I'm a 20-year resident living a few blocks from the ECO facility and a member of San Jose Action, a group that formed to bridge the residents of our various districts, to share information and engage together on projects that affect our communities and disenfranchise members like our senior population and our homeless. San Jose Action members dug deep into this project when it was first proposed and have tracked it with Charities Housing, our council representative, and the planning team leads for the past two years. Across this time, we've uncovered and highlighted specific serious flaws in the plan that actually threaten the proposed senior tenant population and surrounding community at each major project update. In fact, I'm speaking here tonight on behalf of over 1,500 caring local residents and over 80 concerned local business owners near the site who couldn't be here, who ardently oppose this project because we care about our seniors, population, and homeless, and the details we find troubling with this current plan have not sufficiently been addressed. I did present two petitions and several follow-up signed letters to these folks, to the council early, from these folks, to the council members earlier this year, so I hope you see in them. I am the opposition that folks don't seem to know about, and so were they. One of our biggest concerns is that despite the nice sentiments from the other well-meaning speakers here tonight, the homeless vetting and security measures are still questionable in an area that has seen dramatic degradation to the extent that our local businesses are telling us, over two years of talking to them on an ongoing basis, that they are slated to leave because they can't afford to stay here because of the crime, the blight, and some of the homeless, drug-addicted issues they're dealing with." Again, we did outline these concerns time and time again.
Sorry to cut you off, but your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for hearing me.
Good evening, Commissioners. You could smile a little. It increases your face value. There you go. Thank you. I'm, I'm here to respectfully request that you do three things, so kept it very simple. Number one, Charities Housing is creating the solution. All you need to do is be part of that solution by saying yes tonight. Number two is to act. Act in favor of this project. And number three, I sort of given you a hint there, which is approve, approve this project. My name is Claudine Cipili. I am here because I am formerly homeless. You see, homeless is not a race. It's not a disease, right? This is the face of what homelessness becomes when homelessness ends up in a home and then becomes stabilized and overcomes all the issues that causes homelessness. This is what it looks like. In addition to this, I am actively a lived experience advisory board member that is put on by Destination Home and Santa Clara County. I am very active in, in, in LEAB. I also work as a program manager at City Team Ministries. We run homeless shelters. I currently work with seniors that are experiencing homelessness every single day, and I tell you what, hope is elusive for those people because it's so very difficult to house them. I am also a veteran. I became homeless after I, I became a veteran, and I tell you what, the, the struggles and the difficulties are very, very hard to overcome. You need agencies like Destination Home and, and other partners that, that, that have already spoken tonight in order to come out of homelessness. So, again, why is this important? Because dignity is important. If you are human, you deserve a house over your head. Number two, it's the right thing to do. And I, again, I ask you for these three things. Be a part of the solution, act, and approve this project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. So, seeing no more cards, I'm going to close the public comment and ask staff if they have any additional comments or things that they'd like to add.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. I wanted to respond to the comments raised regarding, first, the crosswalk. As you'll see in the CUP resolution, there is a voluntary condition on behalf of the applicant to build a signalized crosswalk across Blossom Hill should the project have sufficient funding. Based on our Public Works and DOT staff's analysis of the project, it did not warrant the requirement for the crosswalk. However, Charities Housing would like to be able to, to produce that crosswalk should they have the funding. However, it was not required per the analysis. And I think charities may be able to speak a little bit more about the security measures. I did outline them in my staff report, but if we want to give them that opportunity, we did mention there's 24-hour security desk, there'll be cameras, and they can speak to that a little bit more in terms of their experience with other, other projects. And lastly, I think charities can also speak to one of the services and programs that they intend to have in the site, which is Second Harvest Food Bank, food distribution. There was a comment regarding the fact that there were not going to be any meals prepared for the residents. This project is intended for seniors who are, have an independent living. They will have kitchens. They may have live-in aides, but these are people who they anticipate will be able to support and take care of themselves in that manner. However, there will still be Second Harvest Food Bank services if the residents wish to take advantage of that. Thank you.
I've got a request to speak from Commissioner Yezni.
Thank you, Madam Chair. My question for staff is, the issue was raised of ECO passes, transit passes. A lot of TDM programs do, in fact, provide passes for residents. Has that been discussed with the applicant at all?
Yes. The possibility of ECO passes was discussed with the applicant, and if Manjeet from Public Works wants to chime in, my understanding is that the applicant felt it's cost-prohibitive. It, it does cost a lot of money to provide ECO passes to all of the residents, and I think Kathy may be able to speak to that. But if there's anything else Manjeet would want to add, I will give her that opportunity.
And is it staff's understanding that there's going to be a needle exchange on-site? I thought the applicant said it was, they were not.
That's correct. The applicant never said that there was, that there were going to be a needle exchange program on-site. I think that came from some conversations after or during the community meeting. I included that as part of my description, and I think Kathy, again, can confirm that that's not an intended use for the ground floor.
Thank you.
And I also see a request to speak from Commissioner Oliverio.
Thank you, Chair. I'd just like to make a motion to actually approve the staff recommendation to approve the project.
One second. So, I have been informed that I accidentally closed the public comment without giving the applicant the five minutes to speak and, I'm assuming, in support of the project. So, if the applicant wants to come and exercise their remaining time, if I could reopen public comment, sorry.
Thank you for giving me the opportunity to speak again. I really, I think everyone who spoke this evening and with the additional staff comments probably covered anything additional that I wanted to say, and I don't want to prolong the evening. I, I would just like to reiterate the fact that we are, we have designed the property so that Second Harvest Food Bank can bring their trucks in. They'll do it on a bimonthly basis typically and deliver food to all of our residents, and the service providers, Catholic Charities, and the other folks that will be on-site from the county will make arrangements for Meals on Wheels and all the other, will be able to take advantage of all the other services that exist in the communities because we feel it's important as well that people get fed as, as well as be housed. And no needle exchange program. Thank you.
Question from Commissioner Allen.
Hi, Kathy. How are you?
I'm fine.
Great. Thanks for being here tonight. Really quickly, if you could, it's already been addressed a bit, but if you could comment really quickly and maybe expand a bit on why you weren't able to include the condition of, or in the TDM, the transit passes, even on a voluntary basis, if residents came to you asking for them as opposed to supplying them to everyone, could you speak a little bit to that in terms of the cost of the overall project, how that factors in?
Sure. Yeah. We did discuss that, and we, the, because of the location of the project, being both adjacent to lots of great bus transportation and light rail, the annual pass per, for each of our residents would be about $125 a year this year, starting now, but could go up at, as, as costs go, go up, and, which results in probably, and, and it has to, if you offer it to one, it has to be available to everyone. So, the cost is somewhere around $30,000 a year for transit passes. We would love to be able to do that if we can, you know, affordable housing developments, operating budgets are structured basically to break even so that we can keep the rents as low as possible. But absolutely, if we had another funding source, and we'll continue to look, we would, we would love to be able to do that. We've got lots of other opportunities and enhancements that we're going to be providing at the development to try to both limit the cars that come in and out of the site and provide transit for people who need to get around and, and may not have their own cars, which is really the case with a lot of seniors these days.
Thank you. I really appreciate that, and thank, I also want to point out that you are agreeing to, I think, six different strategies under their current TDM policy. Which include a public transportation coordinator on-site for folks with special needs. So, thank you for doing that. I would ask that you consider, or continue to consider, the ECO pass option. I understand completely how financing works on these projects because I've talked to a lot of nonprofit developers, and that leads me to my second question for you, or maybe it's, it's more of a request. Could you address the concern that was raised by the folks from Catalyze SV regarding the number of units and the decision, the decisions you made to, on the scale of the project, one way or the other, and how that was influenced, whether, I'm guessing it was not entirely community influence and there was a financial factor, but if you could maybe extrapolate on that a little bit and give us a little more background as to how that decision was made?
I think that, that primarily it, it is a community negotiation that we went through with, that with the community. We held 30 or 35 meetings with the neighborhood associations, the school district, the community groups, individuals, and there are, you know, there are realities that we face when we go into the community about what will be acceptable, and, and we're always trying to balance the, being a good neighbor to everyone and building something that they feel fits within their neighborhood, and maximizing the, the site as much as we can. So, we felt like we had made a commitment to the community on the number of units we would build and the parking that we would provide, and when Catalyze asked us to consider adding more units, I really felt like I could not change our position with the community. It, it doesn't bode well for developers to promise one thing and then do something else.
I would agree.
Costs are a consideration. One more, one more story adds more costs, but it really has a lot more to do with a commitment I feel like we made to the community.
I would definitely respect that commitment, and I understand that the time it takes to develop these projects and to get the financing in the first place are such that if we were to, for whatever reason, vote to demand that you add another floor to the building tonight, we're looking at, you know, another year, maybe more, of delay, and that could lead to delays in financing, and it could mean that nothing gets built on the site. I just want to make that abundantly clear. It's not that I'm not for more housing. I think we should maximize every single site, but it is, it is a negotiation, not just with the community, but with your own, yourselves, with your financiers, with everyone that's involved in the project, and I, I applaud you for taking on these kind of projects, and it's, it's refreshing to hear the amount of support that you've received tonight for it. So, thank you for that, and that's all my questions for you now. Kathy?
Thank you.
Have a great night.
Thank you. So, I'm going to reclose the public comment, period, and I think there was a motion on the table and a second. Does the maker of the motion want to make any statements about this motion?
Thank you, Chair. Staff, you know, we have a general plan, we have comments made by council members, comments made by planning commissioners, and they're pretty consistent on maximizing density on every single parcel. Last week, or two weeks ago, we had a residential-to-residential where we basically went from 100 units to 700 units on one parcel off of Winchester. In this case, we're converting a, supposed to be a commercial land, job land, to this development, and each of those parcels are really precious. And so, in this conversation, when you have with applicants, because when it comes to the commission, it's too late, and we're just sort of blessing it doesn't meet within the guidelines, but is there that, is, does staff talk to applicants about, you know, we're trying to meet some goals, and you really should be pushing for the maximum density? Are those conversations happening with applicants?
Thank you, Commissioner. I am the second planner on this project, but I believe- I am the second planner on this project, but I believe that the original planner did have that conversation with the applicant. The site that currently exists is 32,000 square feet, so I think in an ideal world, maybe the planning commission and city council would want to see 32 or more thousand square feet replaced, but...
I'm sorry, I apologize. I'm talking about, not commercial, I'm talking about maximum residential capacity.
Density, okay.
Yeah. Because this, as stated, once you build residential, it's going to be there for 50 years. Lost opportunity is planning staff pushing when these applications come in to go for the maximum height, the maximum density. Usually the state density bonus laws, I see it's used for parking here, but usually it's in other communities, use it to get even more units than it's allowed by the general plan.
Yeah. In this case, with it being neighborhood, community, commercial designation, we're looking at the FAR. And with NCC sites, you can go up to 3.5 FAR. The, the project does not go at that or above that requirement. But with urban villages, we, we do have, I think, a goal, a minimum right now of 55 dwelling units to the acre for residential projects. I don't know whether we asked for more housing on this site. Again, I think we're cognizant of the finance, the financing of these projects, and, you know, we would, I think, want to see maybe 500 units on a certain parcel, but we understand that there's, there's, there's a budget and there's probably, you know, considerations for the applicant and why they want to go that, that height. But we, we are sort of, our, the way we work right now is 55 dwelling units to the acre, but I believe we're pushing and we want to incorporate language in the general plan that talks about a higher dwelling unit per acre, 74 maybe, if I'm not mistaken. Okay.
Okay, thank you. And I don't know if there's a comment from the more senior planning official here that's on the dais. Just want to, again, I just want, I'm supporting the project. Obviously, I made the motion, want to see this get happened, but it's also, you know, these opportunities are so far and few behind, is, from your perspective and your management level, is that getting, you know, talked to on applicants that they really need to go for the maximum density?
Well, some applicants request for density bonus, and then with density bonus, they could go higher than what the zone allows.
Right. So, I mean, like I said, I'm supporting...
This applicant had the opportunity to do that.
Yeah, and I just think it's a lost opportunity. I'm still obviously supporting the project, but, you know, 30 to 35 community meetings is ridiculous. That's way too much burden on an applicant. You need to have a few meetings just with professional planning staff, where planning staff, you know, really talks to the community and says, this is the general plan, these are the goals of your city. And, you know, if you, if you don't, just to explain that to residents, because the constant opposition to this type of infill housing is difficult, and frankly, you know, if it was built to the maximum, that would, you know, just provide, as the common speaker said, more folks that were homeless could have a unit, more folks that are on a fixed income could have a unit. I just, you know, like I said, we're, at the planning commission level, we're just, you know, we're constrained to what we can do. And I just want to make sure that a year from now, when another application comes forward, that, that discussion was had with the applicant to always push for maximum density. I don't, you know, I appreciate all the work the staff does, I just want to get things earlier in the process so we can get more units out of it. Thank you.
Thank you, we'll take that into consideration.
Thank you.
Got a few more commissioner comments. I've got a request to speak from Commissioner Bonilla.
Thank you for recognition. I, the reason I seconded the motion is, you know, earlier during public comment, there was a quote given from a former planning commissioner, and started with, the world has changed. And I think we can all agree it has. On the one hand, we are living in the epicenter of the strongest economy, the fifth largest economy in the world. The downside of that is that there are people who are unfortunately in need of housing. And I think that tonight, in, in supporting this project, we take a very big step in helping alleviate that a little bit. The reality is, every section of the city is going to have to really carry its fair share of this type of housing if we are truly to get ourselves out of the current situation that we're in right now. And as the 10th largest city in the nation, I think we can and must do better. For that reason, I am supporting this project. On a personal note, my grandmother lived in affordable housing, as a senior, before she lived with me towards the end of her life. I can assure you that the only crime that was being committed at that time was either she was feeding me too much, or, or my alibi for when I said to my parents that I was going to her place. I know what these places are like. I know what happens there. Like in any situation, whether it's Beverly Hills 90210, or, or an affordable housing project, there's a mix of everyone. Some good, some okay, and some that make mistakes. But in my mind, this is a winning project for the city, a model for what needs to happen if we are truly committed to the idea that the city is going to tackle this problem. So for that reason, I second Commissioner Oliverio's motion and supporting this project, and unequivocally, I'm behind you.
Commissioner Allen.
Thank you, Madam Chair. First, I just want to, I'm supporting the motion on the floor. I want to first thank every single person who came, whether you came to speak or you came just to attend the meeting tonight, you took time out of your lives to be here. You're not getting paid to be here, not that we are, we get a nice little stipend. But, but we don't get paid the big bucks to be here, and I really appreciate everyone for being here, whether you support or oppose the project. I want to shout out Robyn, if she's still here. She thanked us for the opportunity to speak. It's your building, Robyn, it's our building, so you are welcome here anytime, and anyone is welcome here anytime to come and speak, or to address the commission or the council. I also want to give a shout out to Marie, and your six kids, that's amazing. My mom would say there's a special place in heaven for you. Just with three kids, six is going double duty. So thank you for that, and thank you for coming down. To the folks who came down to oppose the project, I did hear, I did hear you. And I just want to give a quick suggestion. One, I would echo what the gentleman from Cara said, that it really does make a lot of sense to say that you're worried about unhoused people coming to your neighborhood to be housed. It doesn't seem to jibe with me. So if you're worried about unhoused people doing whatever you think they're going to be doing, giving them a house seems to be the solution and not the problem. So just wanted to point that out. And if you are going to submit a petition to the commission, we did receive them, and we, I do read every single thing I get, I promise, and I do respond to as many as I can. We received more than, I would guess, at least 100 if not 200 emails on this subject in letters. If you're going to submit a petition, I would suggest saving paper and including more than three signatures per sheet, just a suggestion, maybe 10, 12, just to save paper and save a few trees. If you're going to do them on paper, I would prefer the change.org online petitions. As everyone was talking tonight, speaking tonight, I, the one word that kept going through my mind is lucky. And that's because I'm lucky. I'm incredibly lucky. I'm lucky that my parents, accountant and a public school teacher, could afford to purchase a home in Willow Glen some 40 years ago before the prices got completely out of control, and that my mother now lives in a home that's paid off, and she can live on her fixed income as a retired teacher and survive, and live in the neighborhood where I grew up, and stay there, and stay close to me and my family, my growing family. I'm also really lucky that my grandparents were, did well enough to be able to afford a home near Lincoln High School, Rose Garden adjacent, I like to call it, in the 60s, that I was able to inherit at least half of, and now live with my wife, who works in public service. I work in the nonprofit sector, we don't make a lot of money, and we certainly wouldn't be able to afford to live here if we didn't have that kind of luck and privilege. I want to recognize that because I think it's really important for everyone up here and on the council and in public service to recognize the privilege that they have to make these decisions, but also to be able to just be here in the first place and exist and have that respect. So I'm very excited to be able to approve this project tonight, or to give people the dignity that they deserve. I do want to really quickly say that it's, I really thank staff for, one, for all of your hard work on this, and everyone from charities and everyone else who's worked on it. But I, and I really want to thank you for including the notes about the studies that have shown that property values, crime, right, there's no, there's no negative impact to these things when you're building housing for people. No matter who's going into the housing, it's always going to improve things, it's always going to raise your property values. However, it's incredibly discouraging that we even have to have that point raised in a staff report. That's common sense. And I apologize to anyone who's offended by that, but if you sincerely think that this kind of a project is going to increase crime and increase blight and increase problems in your neighborhood, you need to look in the mirror and take a serious, and seriously question your values. Seriously. If that's the city that, I don't want to live in a city where that is the majority opinion, I'm glad it's not, I'm glad we had so many people come out tonight to speak in favor of this project, but I'm sorry. It does not meet the common sense standard. And it's funny how common sense is the most rare of all the senses these days. Society, and we define ourselves, as someone, the speaker so eloquently said, we define ourselves by how we treat our most vulnerable. And to me, that's our seniors and our children. And we're failing both of them right now. So at least this project can do, can take one step towards solving, not solving the problem, but at least addressing the problem that we're facing. So I'm really excited to support it tonight. I hope my commissioners unanimously support it, except for Commissioner Ballard, who had to recuse herself. And I will point out that, I also will echo her sentiment that I work for a nonprofit agency, or I'm contracting with a nonprofit agency that has member nonprofit organizations, including Charities Housing. I'm not getting paid or docked a dollar on my pay whether or not this motion passes tonight. I want to point that out, but if anyone has an issue with me sitting up here and making that decision, they can bring it up with me, but I feel fully confident in making the decision I'm making tonight, and knowing that it's biased in all the right ways. So thank you, Madam Chair, I'll be voting in favor.
Commissioner Yezny.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to quickly connect two points that were made tonight. One is that we're 30 to 35 meetings in the community between the project sponsors and members of the public. And two, there weren't very many people here speaking against the project. That's not a coincidence. I think that the project proponents did a great deal of outreach in order to bring forward a project that satisfies a large component of the, of the community, and we're grateful for that outreach, that the work that was done to make the project acceptable to the neighborhood. Regarding the issues related to density and what's the minimum and why isn't it higher, I think we're going to see some changes in the future, just based on the state legislation. Staff has mentioned in other conversations that a lot of the things that were taken into account in some of our soft general plan policies that we won't be allowed to depend on or use to reduce densities in the future. We are going to be maximizing densities much more. And for San Jose, frankly, I don't think it's going to make as big an impact as it's going to be elsewhere, because San Jose has been building more affordable housing than anybody else in this part of the world for a long time. But this may be the kick in the butt we need to raise the ante. Hopefully, we'll do it well, architecturally sensitive to the neighborhoods, and in a fashion that is a positive asset for the city in the future. We're going to be more urban because that's the way the bus is going. And I'm grateful that this project is dragging along some of us old people that aren't going to have a whole lot of buses available to us. And I'm, I'm grateful that Charities is involved in this business. I also am aware of their reputation. So thank you, staff.
Thank you. Commissioner Caballero.
I'm going to be supporting the motion, and I just wanted to thank all the folks who have come out to speak, both for and against this project. I really specifically found the comments from the formerly homeless folks impactful and appreciate their, sharing their stories with us. As a child, I used to go with my mother to homeless shelters, and she would, I was too young to help actually volunteer, and so I would sit and chat with folks. And I remember walking away thinking they're just, they're, you're just like everyone else, right? Except you don't have a home. And I was recently at a, an event where someone said to me, or someone said on the panel, you know, you're only homeless until you have a home, and then you're not homeless anymore. And that is a sentiment that I think really needs to be out there in the public, because the opposition to these kinds of projects comes from the fear of the other, the fear of the unknown. And once we give people the supportive housing and services that they need, they no longer are that unknown, they're just another neighbor. And so I also really wanted to thank Charities Housing for listening to the community, for doing all that they could to address the needs. Again, I echo all of the comments that the commissioners have said previously, both on the density issues, on the transit issues. You know, I hope that we will be seeing higher density projects. I take into account the fact that, you know, these are a balancing act between what the community wants and/or thinks they want, and what we need. But I think that this is a great example of a project that needs to go forward. While I would love to see a couple more stories on it, to Commissioner Allen's point, I would not want to hold up this project to do that, because we need this now. You know, I'm also, on a personal note, I'm also a child of a senior who is struggling to stay in her home. And, you know, so she, so like Commissioner Ballard, my mom said, you know, I hope you approve this because we really need more opportunities like this. I don't want to have to leave in order to stay here. So I'll be supporting this motion, and I thank all of you for coming here tonight, and for all the work of the staff, and all the work of the developers and the community to make this happen. So thank you.
So my comments are going to be basically redundant of the vast majority of the comments that are stated here today, as well as my fellow commissioners. I think because this project is providing homes for the homeless by definition, it's not adding to the homeless problem. And what I was struck, and in particular from the comments of some of our formerly homeless individuals, but that homelessness is simply a description of a situation. It is not a description of who someone is or what their worth is as a human. And I think that we all need to remember that. And I was thinking about a statistic that I've read several times, which is that I think over half of Americans would not be able to afford an unexpected $500 expense. So we are not that far away from that situation, and, and I think we all need to remember that. But even if we would never experience that in our lives, it is a measure of our society that we take care of those who cannot take care of themselves. So with that, I am wholeheartedly supporting the project. And I was also very pleased to see that it, I think it's a really attractive building, and that it is going to very much improve the aesthetic of the neighborhood. And I would love to see some great design in San Jose, and I think this project does that and provides this great benefit to our community. So I will be supporting the project as well. So I think it's time for a vote. Not that that seems to be a very exciting vote, but... So we have a, what is it, a 6-0, and it doesn't reflect that it should be me voting instead of Commissioner Ballard, but we have Commissioner Ballard abstaining and my vote in favor. Can I move it to Commissioner Ballard? She's going to take over, or do I?
No, she left.
Oh, she left? Okay. All right. Okay, so we need to go to, all right, so we're going to the, to the...
Report from council.
Item six. Seeing none, we're going to move to...
No items from city council.
Do you have something?
No, no.
Okay. We're going to go to item seven, A, report from city council.
There were no items on land use, but what may interest you will be the North San Jose, which is the amendment to the North San Jose area policies. City council accepted staff's report on the status and directed staff to come back early next year with an approach to complying with CEQA and also the new state legislation for housing.
We're going to turn to reviewing and approving the action minutes from December 4.
Motion approved. Second.
We'll take a vote.
Don't worry about my light.
Commissioner?
Commissioner Allen.
What, what number are we voting on?
We are voting on 7B.
7C.
7C, no, 7B, 7P. 7C, no, 7B, 7P. We have a 6-0 vote with Commissioner Ballard abstaining, and me voting in Commissioner Ballard's place here.
And she's absent.
Oh, she'd be absent, I'm sorry.
Okay, absent, yes.
Moving on to item 7C, committee formation reports in outstanding business, anything to report?
Nothing.
Nothing? Commission calendar and study sessions, item 7D. Nope. Still no 2020, all right. And public record 7E, anything? No. All right, with that, we will adjourn.